Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is Independent School District 832. It's a regular school meeting of the Madam Ete High School District on Monday, August 26th, 7:00 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call of attendance?
Done.
Okay, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Moved by Director Domann.
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move.
By Director Peterson.
Second.
Seconded by Director Donna. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. No presentations, no reports. So superintendent's report.
Thank you, and I will make this pretty quick. So today, we were back to school. Our staff was here, and we had a great kickoff. We got to hear from Ryan Collins, our Teacher of the Year. And now, all of our teachers are in their classrooms working hard to get ready for our students to be back with us. And we do have some orientations going on this week, which will be fun to have some students in our buildings as well. Road construction continues, and so I just want to encourage everyone to look and see what we've sent out recently about the updates on road construction and how you can access our campus. I've said this so many times before, but I will not stop saying it. We need to. I really want to encourage you, if you drive your children to school at the middle school or high school, I really want to encourage you to, all families, to use the St. Andrews parking lot. On the lower lot, you can drop off your children there, and they can walk through the upper lot and access the middle school and high school. And it will just save you a ton of time not having to go through that line. But using the bus is a great option as well, and probably I would go for the first choice. Or walking or riding. I know that Jenny might want to put in a plug for that, too. So just anything you can do, though, to help us in this situation. No one's happy. No one's happy about what's happening. And it's going to take a little while. We're all going to need to be patient and work together. So anything that people can do. Did you want to put in a plug for the lower level of St. Andrews?
I do use the lower level, and I love it because then my children have to walk for about 10 minutes or maybe eight minutes, but just enough to wake them up, and then they're ready for school and they get to school. So I love it.
All right. Well, thank you. Another plug for that lot. I just would really encourage everyone to use it. The only other thing I really wanted to use my time for is that I wanted to call Tim Erickson up. This isn't on our agenda, but it's something we wanted to get you thinking about. It's something that we've talked a little bit about with our refunding, so our refinancing. But I'm going to let you, Tim, talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, refunding is kind of a technical term, but I'd rather use refinancing. You'll see the refunding and all the legal documents that we have to do. But as you remember, you recall, we've been talking about refinancing one of our highest interest rate bond issues. We've got about $20, a little over $22 million left in payments on that bond issue. And those rates are at 5%. If you've been, you know, if you're kind of a nerd and you're listening to market things and you're listening to economy, that type of thing. You know that the Federal Reserve had come out last week. They had their big summit in Jackson Hole, Wyoming. And Federal Chairman Powell indicated, a little stronger indication that they will probably lower, possibly lower those rates even more. So what we're looking at right now, I think, I believe when we came to you last time, we're looking at about $1.4 million in savings. And I just want to point out, this is taxpayer savings. I mean, this will be passed along directly to our taxpayers. So this is a great thing. It will allow us to lower our overall debt service levy. Now, today, we got some updated numbers based on the rates have started to dip again. And we're at about $1,642 in savings. So we want to try to go after that. And we have different windows of time, and I won't get into all of that. We'll get into that a little bit more in the next meeting. But what we'd like to do is to take advantage of that savings and try and maximize or have at least a minimum threshold of savings that we would do prior to going out to refinance, is to have this, we talked a little bit about a parameters resolution that the board would issue. They'd issue an intent to issue bonds along with parameters that would give the administration some flexibility. So as we watch those rates on a regular basis, and if we see any clouds on the horizon that might bring rates up or bring them down, it kind of gives us a lot more flexibility. A parameters resolution is not uncommon. I did it in my previous district, and it works out well for us. We can just strike a little faster. So we'll bring back, the intent is to bring back on the ninth, the parameters resolution, a couple of different, a couple more of different scenarios to look at as far as how that savings can get distributed over time. And anything else that you'd like to see. So if you have any questions or anything that you'd like to see for that next meeting, certainly let me know. If you have anything now.
Director Donna.
I'm sure. I think, Tim, we've talked in the past about, so this would be essentially replacing the old debt just with lower interest rates, keeping the term of the existing bonds the same, correct?
Correct, yeah.
And is one of the scenarios, at least I'd like to see, and I think some others would be interested, too, a scenario in which we basically extend the debt, right, and create capacity for other budgetary items in the future. So if we could, that's one scenario that at least I'd like to see.
Okay.
I think we've talked about it in the past.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I just, so we wanted to bring this up because Tim had just received that news about the potential even greater savings than we were anticipating. And so we want to make sure that we gave this back to you. You've heard it before, but we wanted you to hear it again before we talk about it. And hopefully, not even, potentially take action on it, depending on what we're hearing at that point, right?
Yeah, we'd like to do, you know, if we can get the resolution as early as possible, which would be the September 9th meeting. Not the end of the world if you are not comfortable at that point, but then we'd shoot for the meeting on the 23rd.
Thank you. Oh, but before we move on, I did want to add to, so Paul and I were there this morning, and I stayed for the speeches. And I just want to give a lot of kudos to you for your speech. I think, I really hope everyone can see what Barb shared this morning. It was really, it was all tied to the strategic plan. And there was video done by Alice, and it was just so, it was just, they just captured some really great things going on in the district. So I think we're going to find a way for everyone to see it. And then, of course, the teachers who spoke were fantastic, too, and we'll be seeing more of Mr. Collins, so. But it was great. I thought it was a really great back-to-school event. And yes, great job on sharing really, really what's happening directly tied to our strategic plan.
And it was, and again, Alice really put a lot of effort into putting those videos together for us, but they also just really highlighted the hard work of our staff.
Yes.
Wasn't hard to find stories, I will say.
Yeah, it was great. Okay, so next, Board Member Calendar. Oh, yes, Director Peterson.
Kate, are you still here? Any chance, last year, we did that if you parked at St. Andrews, you got a little snack on your way to school? Would you want to do that? Was that a flop? Okay, all right.
But that doesn't mean it can't be. So again, we love it when people use that lot, whether there are snacks or not. It is a great option.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay, then, we are now on to Board Member Calendar under Discussion Items. One thing I do want to point out that we need to change, and we, oh, this says discussion, but I think we're voting on these. I thought we were moving.
Oh, right. You probably, you'll want to talk about it and then move it to Action Items.
Okay, okay. So Board Member Calendar. Well, first of all, everyone can take a look at it and see if it has anything to point out. The main thing I want to note is that on Monday, September 9th, we were planning to do a board retreat. We don't really need that time that early in September now. So we're going to turn that into a study session slash special meeting, and the time will be at 5:30. Okay, yes, Director Donna.
Madam Chair, quick clarification. On Tuesday, September 3rd, virtual meeting, coffee and conversation, is that MSBA?
It's MSBA. So if you look at an updated version, it says MSBA now.
Thank you.
And there was another one in there that's been changed as well. Any other? Okay, so we do, I think, need to vote on this because we changed that meeting.
And you can just take action on it.
Okay.
Your agenda, so you can.
Okay, so let's go ahead. Can I get a motion to approve this calendar? Moved by Director Domann. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Donna. Discussion. Yes, Director Peterson.
Yes, but I probably just need to reach out to the PTO. We meet once a month. It's on there twice, two weeks in a row, one at 9:00 in the morning. What is that?
We'll all talk about that next.
Okay. And you can, if you can't make one of those, you can always ask one of us.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the Board Calendar of Events as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, next, this School Board Goals. Okay, so these were put into the...
You all have a hard copy.
And you also have a hard copy. So these, as you know, we discussed at our study session two weeks ago. I'll just walk through them, and if you want to call out anything or have questions, just get my attention. So we talked about fostering increased community awareness around district needs. So this will include more community meetings with, for our parents and community members and local leaders. We'll have focused district dessert and dialogue and coffee and conversations events aligned to the strategic plan. I will participate or present a community organization such as Lions Club, MAF and Rotary, so we can be more engaged in those group, with those groups. We'll leverage our parent-community business and legislative partnerships. And we will continue to support a proactive operating and capital budget process that addresses the district's strategic plan and priorities. Does that capture everything we talked about? Great. The second one is augment understanding of strategic plan implementation. And so these are ways that we can see our strategic plan taking place throughout the buildings. So we'll have board learning walks throughout the district and increased participation at school building visits, district events and classroom presentations. So that, we'll work with Barb and administration to make sure we're aware of more of those opportunities. And then, third, increase board visibility and efficiency. So that's, this is where I put, we discussed at length the idea of establishing a board rep for each member municipality. So we can do that in this year, and then we can just designate who that will be. Hold training with our board attorney. It's been several years since we've done that. And then, obviously, we want to have robust committee work, study sessions and board meeting prep to ensure that we are being efficient with our time and making the most of our, how we're serving the district. Any? Yes?
So I have a question about the last one on the board rep for each member municipality. That one, I really loved when we had that conversation about it. What I struggle with is exactly what that means.
So that's, I think, yes, and we can define that, I think, whenever we designate, however we set it up. But what I took away from it was that we definitely want somebody engaging with each of our member municipalities that are part of our district. And then we need to really explore ways to find partnerships so that we're supporting the work that Barb's doing through our increased participation.
And I would agree with that. What I struggle with is what that doesn't mean is attending every one of their meetings and, okay.
No, no. So I could add a little bit to that. After you had talked about wanting to do that, I guess, one of my thoughts was that we have our city leaders meeting, excuse me, where we could, once you've determined what that would look like, be able to kind of talk about it at that city's leaders meeting and just suggest what we think would be a good way to engage, and they can give us feedback on that as well.
Okay, so I think that's everything. So if we're ready, could I get a motion to approve this?
I'll move.
By Director Donna. We're moving things even under Discussion Item.
So this Discussion Item is an Action Item now?
Yes.
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson.
Who made the motion?
Donna. And? Any discussion? If you're ready. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. And now for our Superintendent Goals.
Okay, so these goals, we talked a little bit about it. Not everyone was able to make it to our last meeting, so if you have questions, let me know. But you'll notice that they continue to be tied to our strategic plan. The first area is agency, the second, trust and partnership, the third, excellence, the fourth, inclusive and equitable. And so you will see a number of these as a continuation of what we worked on last year. And some of them are new, but also taken straight out of our strategic plan that we adopted. I'll just offer that under trust and partnership, something that was not written into our strategic plan had to do with our budget. And we've agreed that that's something that we need to communicate about and talk about more. And so I do have goals that are under our budget and facilities as well. So that one's a new one, but in the spirit of trust and partnership and being very transparent about finances and our facilities project, I thought that fit under there. So I don't know if you have any other questions about it since last week talked.
Okay, I think, I feel like we covered all of this, so thank you. I think they look really good. Any other comments? Okay, we're ready. And so we're also taking action on this. Can I get a motion to approve the Superintendent Goals? Moved by Director Domann. Seconded by Director Regan. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, and now for the Superintendent Evaluation Summary. So this is a requirement that our summary is read aloud at the following board meeting after we've decided as a board, and I'm happy to do that, so I will just be reading this. And then this will be the summary that goes into the, with all the paperwork. At the August 12, 2024 School Board Study Session, the board discussed the superintendent end-year review survey results. The board shared in conversation and in the board survey that Superintendent Duffrin has successfully implemented the 2023-2024 goals with respect to agency, trust and partnership, and excellence. One of the identified 2023-2024 goals was regarding agency for students, including the development of systems supporting a strong academic foundation and a multi-year literacy improvement plan with avid college and career readiness strategies embedded in the middle school and the high school. Superintendent Duffrin's ongoing implementation of the rigorous early literacy professional learning is exceptional. The board is pleased with the career readiness progress at the middle school and would like to see additional opportunities in the area of CTE and internships for high school students as it aligns to the strategic plan. Additionally, the work on defining agency and grade band expectations is impressive. The board is confident that Superintendent Duffrin will provide consistent understanding to her team, teachers and the community in order to have integration across the district. In the goal area of trust and partnership, Superintendent Duffrin is successfully providing clarity and transparency around learning and curriculum at each grade level with a district-wide curriculum grid. Additionally, the superintendent has effectively led her teams in communication practices with a standardized approach when addressing parents or guardians, and continues to demonstrate parent input is welcome and encouraged. The building signs successfully captured the student spirit for each grade level while remaining consistent with the message that all students belong and are Zephyrs. In the final goal area of excellence, the superintendent has made very good progress in defining school and district success metrics. The board hopes to see more context with the identification of areas needing improvement and plans for progress in those areas. The board is excited about the learner profile work and the finalization of the portrait of a graduate. Superintendent Duffrin has met all the goals for the 2023-2024 school year, and the board has confidence in her continued leadership and advancement of the goals aligned to the strategic plan. The board appreciates her strong work ethic, her dedication, availability, responsiveness, and willingness to have frank discussions on any topic. Her leadership has been instrumental in enhancing student opportunities and academic growth. Her leadership is highly valued and appreciated.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. That was very nice. I hadn't read that. But I do want to, as you're reading it, I will say, I was making meaningful eye contact with my team in here because a lot of, you know, what you're reading there is the work of a really great team that I have. So I will give, I hope we all recognize that as well.
Yes, you have a great team, but they have a great leader.
And I appreciate that, but just, so thank you all, too.
Okay, so that's...
Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving to our official action items. Approval of donations and grants for July 2024 totaling $1,599.76. Can I get a motion? Moved by Director Domann.
Second.
Seconded by Director Peterson. Any discussion? All donations and grants are greatly appreciated. The use of these funds will be to further the mission of this school district and are used towards the wishes of the donor. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Approval of cost share and access agreement.
Thanks. So we have talked about this once before, and I asked to hold on it just in case there are any updates again, and there haven't been. So I am asking for approval on this cost share and access agreement. Just for some background, we do have a perpetual easement agreement dated September 11, 2001 with St. Andrews to be able to access our campus through their, through their campus. And previously, before they did all their construction, our traffic would go through the upper lot and into the high school, back and forth. But when they did their construction, that got blocked off, and then they paved the way for us to access our campus right off of Hilton, which is a lot safer way for people to travel. And so this cost share agreement both recognizes that change in where we access our campus through St. Andrews and also acknowledges that we are a good portion of the traffic that comes through the light where they're being assessed for the road improvements. And so this is an acknowledgement that we have, we have part in this. And so we are, we're asking you to approve this to share the, share the costs of those improvements. I will say, we have an amazing partnership with St. Andrews. We're very fortunate for the way that we maintain that space together. And whoever gets their first plows, it's, it's just a great partnership. So we want to maintain that, and so I'm asking for approval of this cost share and access agreement.
Oh, moved.
Okay, moved by Director Peterson. Can I get a second?
Second.
Seconded by Director Donna. Any other discussion? Yes, Director Regan.
So I just have, I guess, a question, and I think I know the answer, but I just feel like I have to ask it. So when I saw this on the agenda, obviously knowing we're in a tough spot right now with the construction and the roads and all of that, knowing this isn't, isn't long-term, but obviously, this is going to be a hard month. Is there an opportunity at all to, I know it says, and it's stated with signs, to not come in off of, is that east and whatever? Is that at all a possibility to access that just for a couple of weeks until? It's really difficult, as we all know, getting around all the way, whether you go down the dirt road, all the way to Jamica or whatever. Has that even been a conversation? I know it's not totally pertaining to this, but this is what made me think of that, just short-term.
Well, I will say, it's a really good option to drop your kids off at the lower level of St. Andrews. So the other part of this, though, is...
But if they drive.
Yeah, but if, yeah. So the thing is, is that we have a lot of kids that are walking and biking through that lot, and it just really isn't safe. So this is really about safety, safety of our kids. And if that's open, we have a lot of kids just drive, and actually, and parents driving really quickly through there. And so this, this is really to keep kids safe. Now, I don't know if they will have other times of day, but that, that people will be able to pass through. That's, I guess, that's not my responsibility. But during the school day, it's just, it's just not safe for our kids. And so that's why it continues to be that way. It is, they are going to allow us, though, to bring our buses that are from the northwest part of town to come in in the morning and bring the kids in and drop them at the top of the hill by the middle school and high school. And that's to keep, so that kids don't have to get up super early and have to go all the way around the detour. But, so they are doing that for us and allowing buses in. And Kate is mouthing some things in the back. Was there something you wanted to? Okay. And then walk in. Well, I suppose, I suppose they could. They're likely not going to. But if we could make it so that there are fewer cars driving there, then our students would be able to drive to the lot.
Yeah, and I know my question was not ideal. I just feel like in the meantime, we're in a pretty not ideal situation. And again, we're making, I mean, we're sticking with this because it really is for the safety of kids, so. I knew my answer. I just thought I better ask it.
Yep.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Moving along. Approval of the YMCA pool agreement.
Okay, so this is our, it's a two-year agreement. We, our swim team uses the YMCA pool in White Bear. And also, I'm looking to you because I, the North Saint... Okay, thanks. A couple of different places where our swim team will practice and have meets. And so this is our agreement for the next two years, and so we're asking for your approval.
By Director Domann. I'll second it. Seconded by Director Stout.
Madam Chair, question. This is paid out of the lease levy, correct? Probably. Okay.
And this is the same as it's been for the last two years?
It is somewhat the same. These are pools we've used. I mean, the schedule might be different, so when you say the same, I'm not...
The same locations. Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, on to School Board Committee Reports. Okay, on to school board committee reports. So Director Payne is not with us, so we'll.
However, I was at the AMSD meeting, so I will just say briefly that there were election or nominated a slate of officers for AMSD, and, but the main, the main attraction was a presentation by Lucy Payne and Amy Jones on the role of the board and superintendent in mental health in schools. So they did, they shared some, they shared some research with us, and then also took us through an activity where we thought a, a little bit about decisions that we make and how they might affect mental health. So we had different topics, and then from the decision, what are the, what are the effects of that decision, and to a point where it, we could identify an area that we might need to consider for support for our staff and students and families based on that initial decision. So, so it was a good, good conversation and, and lots of engagement, so.
And MAF, Director Regan.
MAF last met on Monday, August 5th. Quickly, the summary for MAF is that they started off the meeting talking about their MAF marketing and rebranding, and that rebranding their materials and their marketing materials around their new strategic plan, which then also aligns with supporting the school's strategic plan. They also talked about the Wildwood Artist Series, and that they're evolving away from the concert series of that. With that being said, though, they do have some concerts on the books for this school year. To mark your calendars if you're interested, September 22nd at 4:00 PM is Sean Johnson and the Big Band Experience. October 27th at 3:00 PM is the Music Faculty Concert, and January 25th at 7:00 PM is the Simple Gifts Music with Billy McLaughlin, if I'm saying Billy's last name right. They're moving more towards the, supporting the artists in the schools, and there's going to be an artist in residency, I believe, at both Wildwood and OH this year. Do I have that right, I think?
I, I don't recall where the, potentially, but that, I mean, just that idea, though, that they are moving towards really supporting the artists in residency is going to be their focus.
You're going to see MAF out a lot in the community, the Baptist school events, they have volunteers at open house, homecoming, lots of things going on. One thing to mark your calendar for is the second Zephyr Get Together on September 19th, that was at Pine Tree Apple Orchard last year, is going to be there again this year on September 19th, that's 4:30 to 7:00.
And that's for families.
And it's for families, and a really fun event. I know I attended that last year, and it was really great to see a lot of people out, even though the, the weather that last year was really weird that day, it was like.
There's food trucks.
There's all sorts of things, there's apples and food trucks and games and pumpkins and things, so really fun. They are also considering a new ex officio position for either a retired or a current teacher, so they had discussion about that, that they would be a non-voting member to MAF, but they're talking about bringing in the teacher voice to that group. And lastly, I feel like I had one more thing. Oh, and they supported the district breakfast this morning as well, so that is it, that's all I have for MAF from August 5th.
MSBA, Director Peterson.
The coffee and conversations that is coming up last week, the interesting topic was profile of a graduate, and if you haven't done a coffee and conversation yet with them, it's a Zoom from eight to nine every other Tuesday, or two Tuesdays a month. You can say as much as you want and ask as many questions, or you can just sit there quietly and listen to other people share how their district is doing or questions they have. I, I love it. Then, what else? Oh, School Board Recognition Month is now September, not February. And.
Change that.
That is the hot news from MSBA.
Okay, thank you. All right, thank you. Now, for 9/16, we don't have Director Payne with us, but we, she did, she always sends the updates, so I think we're updated on that. Okay, any other board reports? Director Donna.
Madam Chair, just a question, if I can go back to Superintendent Duffrin, you mentioned that Director Payne made a presentation, just curious, was, is that on behalf of our school board or her profession?
That's a good question. I, I think it's because, now I'll have to double check how she, it's not on behalf of our school board, I believe she's in, she's involved in, I'm going to have to get back to you.
Just curious.
Yeah, it was not, it was not highlighting the work of our district. It was, I think, truthfully, I think it was the, the former school board member that was presenting is involved in a statewide organization, and so they together were doing it in part because of Director Payne's facilitation of that, that process as well, and she may also be on that statewide committee, but I'm afraid I don't remember.
Thank you.
Any other board reports?
Yeah, one quick one, we had a very recent facilities meeting earlier tonight, where Adam, our facilities manager, gave some of the work that's been accomplished this summer. Basically, been improvements to OH Anderson, new carpet, new window replacement, and a new playground surface, and then some work due to some of the football field. In addition, a brief overview of the town, with improvements from on the city's access to the United Center, so, and, 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 and.
Can I add one thing?
Yes.
That just, they got, one-third of the classrooms are painted, so just, as we're saying, new windows and carpet and paint, just know they're working on it over breaks, and it'll be done during the school year. So if you say, well, that's not new paint, it's coming.
Great. Okay, I think that's everything. So moved. By Director Peterson. Seconded by Director Regan, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.